Nine o'clock.
Join us for the pledge, please.
Pledge and introduce to the by the United States of America into the Republic for its stance on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to from the May sixth meeting.
So moved.
First and second, all in favor?
All right.
Approved employee claims filed with the county auditor for one thousand thirteen dollars and fifty three cents.
Motion through.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, signify by I.
All right.
Monthly employee health trust report.
I would make a motion to approve.
Okay.
The first and the second, all in favor.
All right.
Approve home industry permit for Corgi win rehabilitation sanctuary.
I'll see you up and explain where it is. So talked briefly about it with you last week. So give you a little bit of history. The owner Brett Butler had called the office once or twice in April just asking about potential building of an accessory building and, you know, setbacks, et cetera. And we had some exchanges and then he had set some flags called for an appointment for me to come out and why this makes this one a little bit interesting is at about the same time we've taken a call from attorney Joe Gray on a potential nuisance complaint from the neighbor that lives to the north, which is in Fayette County. And so I had went out to the site with Brett. Then we had some more interaction via email and then also a call to Amber from Joe. But at that time when I went out, I did not realize you know, the number of dogs or that it was even a sanctuary. So we had to the east roughly about a year ago, we had enlarged Rock Horry and that was on that road probably a dozen times plus or minus with interactions with that project. So I then started asking Brett a few questions in regards to when he was established, when he purchased property, et cetera. Because our new ordinance was adopted in September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. He had taken possession and purchased the property June sixth, which we have this all the time when ordinance changes. So actually, when he purchased and was established, he was already zoned in the agricultural district was at that time allowed stables and kennels. So what I do usually when we come across these, whether it's in the Amish community with a bakery or something that's not in compliance or it's not noted as a business, we try to get them in compliance. And, you know, technically he was rezoned on the property. So since our ordinance was passed after that, we can't necessarily force him to rezone. But I asked him if he'd be willing to give me some information and we would write him a home industry permit. So it's actually on the records in the in the office. So if we take a call, there was, there's been no past calls that I can see logged in our office of a complaint, a nuisance, the first time I'd ever seen it. So anyway, the current building, you can see where it's at. You go up one fifty, go east. This is the aerial imagery currently. The main principal structures is obviously right there. In the past, this has been used as I log back and look at imagery, several alpaca, potential zebras, other animals have been there. So there's a kennel here that you see fenced in. You want to go to the next slide. I had sent you the potential aerial of where the new building would be.
Is this the place where the zebras were killed years ago?
I don't, I don't want the details of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so in regards to our setback requirements, any accessory building in the A one district has to be ten foot off. The current ditch line right away line, this building where the flags are is currently about fifteen feet. So this covers what our current ordinance, that anything new that we go by since September fourteenth. So you can see accessory buildings, ten, ten, ten. So in the process of this, it's twofold, threefold really. So any building, I can authorize that where he's currently proposing to build an accessory building, there's really no question. But I'm just tying it into the issue of the home industry permit. With the site visit, realizing what was going on there and there was something more established than just, you know, him and his residence. I felt that we needed to get it on file in case we took a call or something like that. So if he wanted to build a building tomorrow, you know, he can build an accessory building. There's nothing stopping that. As far as the home industry permit is something I feel that he was already rezoned. He purchased the property. Kennels and stables were allowable use. I would just like to get it on record with the home industry permit like we do any other thing that I come across. And then as far as the nuisance complaint, those get reported to the board of health. And then we try to come to some type of remedy. I do feel, my personal opinion, that if there's some added structure there that for Brett is going to be an insulated building, it's going to be another buffer or potential noise to the north. Obviously, anytime you talk about odor buffer, noise buffer, they're talking, they're talking about structures, fence or trees. I mean, they just deal with that stuff with hogs and any other item that we come across. I did another site visit last week. I had one to the east, so I just stopped in and talked, talked to Brett and wanted to have verbal conversation updating when we're going in front of you and what was going to be presented. At that time, the neighbor from the north did come across the street. There was a fairly extensive verbal exchange and it was loud at times. I listened. And I will say that I witnessed the dogs commonly. I'm not an expert, I don't blame that. But when there's an elevated voices or some type of noise, dogs will usually get excited. I will say during that excursion that lasted five to seven minutes, the dogs were at times even silent. So at that time, they were mostly in this building right here and we were probably standing about right there when Brett and the owner to the north were having a conversation. So during that time, I'd listen, took everything in, sounded like the owner has had some frustration for a while. And he has the opinion that he would rather have the structure built here through that exchange I took in that Brett has the current owner looked in and researched some other placement, but in regards to utility costs, establishing a new driveway, all that kind of stuff. It didn't feel to me that that was of his interest. And again, I go back to my interpretation is you have a nuisance and there's concern of the north. That building's only going to help, you know, aesthetically and in those spots.
Right.
And again, this nuisance will be reported Thursday morning to the board of health. Um, at that time, you know, they might, they give, may give me some guidance or I will continue to have some conversation with Brett to try to make people.
I did drive up there last week on site visit just to check out the area and I didn't hear a thing.
He used to live in Jessup and I walked by his place several times. I never heard a thing.
So her man. That's gotta be renewed on an annual basis.
Correct. So we, the first year it's fifty and then like we're in the process, we just started last week. We're starting to mail them out for Ju- July first. New fiscal year and then it's twenty five years after and for twenty five dollars every year after.
So if we have multiple, say, if there is winds up being a nuisance issue up there, we can hold issuing the permit until that that's complaints taken care of or addressed?
Correct. Lot different than a rezoning. And again, technically we can't really force him to be rezoned because he purchased a property that was recorded as some of the documents stated that I shared with you on June sixth of two thousand and twenty. So he's actually in compliance, but I just feel anytime we come across these, that it's good to get them, get them on file.
I got two more questions. Is there, does this require any bidding, licensing, anything from the D N R or I D O Ls? Why did, and do you have that? Is that, does he have that?
So is Brett in attendance here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I would, I would open it up to Brett and give, have him give you a rundown of, you know, what he has currently with the state.
Okay.
We're under the Iowa Department of Agriculture. And as a sanctuary, we don't fall under any of the rules for kennel or for kennels and rescues or shelters because we're a service for those industry. So there is no specific licensing for any of that for what I do. And they gave us the numbers. If anybody has a question to call, I think I gave you her number. She can explain how it works with them. That's in Des Moines.
So apparently because of this, nobody will be coming out, say, every year or something and just some state inspector showing up or anything like that?
No, there will be, they come out. They were just out in November.
Okay.
Yeah. If there's any issues where they think that there's not compliance because there's certain rules, we still have to follow. But we're not regulated by the Iowa Department of Agriculture specifically because we service nationwide dog shelters and and all that. We're last chance for corgis. So they've had boom, 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 medical issues, behavioral issues. People get them, don't understand the dog, abuse them. So those are the dogs they fly to us. And we've gotten from Hawaii and Alaska and Canada and they fly into us. We try to get them healthy again and take care of their medical issues. They have to all be vaccinated, everything like that's got to be done constantly. We also are not allowing, under the rules, to foster or reown the dogs because of the liability, because they've already got no one issues. So the insurance companies won't cover them and USDA is like, no. They go there, it's a sanctuary. This is where they live. This is going to be their, their lives.
Their permanent home then.
This is their permanent.
Now, another question I have, is this something when our sheriff's department picks up dogs and deputies, they, are they able to come to your?
They have to go to a shelter first.
They have to go to a pound.
And then the county will call us or like I R L, you know, down in Des Moines and say, okay, we've got a corgi, we can't get it reowned. It's human aggression towards us. And then they'll send it to us.
Okay. So they can be channeled to you?
They can be channeled to me.
Yeah.
Yes. And that's what always happens. We don't go looking for dogs. You can't just come out and drop a dog out. There's an application process and there's all that that they have to go through. We have intake coordinator. How many dogs do you currently have? Right now, there's fifty eight.
Okay.
And I've set the limit on that sixty, simply because I know what I can handle. Technically, with the square footage and the way it's set up, we can go, you know, hundred fifty to two hundred. But I would never do that. I couldn't handle it. It'd be really costly too. That's expensive, but luckily we have some of the bigger well-known food, dog food places donate monthly. So it's great. We don't have to worry about that. And then we have three different vets that we use.
Now, how is the waste?
The waste?
Yeah.
Well, since I have three acres fenced, you know, they go out and unless it's near the buildings, I don't have to deal with it. But if I have to pick it up, then I have to dispose it. Yes. They're corgis. It's not like they're.
Great danger.
Same nerds.
That's all I have for questions. I would, I would go ahead and make a motion to, for, through this. Probably have another question, Dr. Chairman.
I was just gonna say there, I, I believe that the homeowner across this road is here too. I hope you allow them to speak or it's up to you.
We have your name and title.
Good morning. My name is Joe Gray. I'm an attorney out of Alliant. I represent Mr. Bernard Shannon, who's the neighbor of Mr. Butler. If I may approach, I have some pictures just to show. Sorry, I didn't know we were gonna be all fancy, the electronics. This, this is a picture of the property with a handful of dogs right there. Again, my name is Joe Gray. I represent Bernard Shannon. Mr. Shannon opposes Mr. Butler's home industry permit for running a kennel or sanctuary out of his home. He is asking the board to deny it. The home industry application due to violation of the zoning ordinance, the nuisance it creates, the impact it has on his use and enjoyment of the prop, of his property and future litigation. Uh, we know the horror stories of people moving out to the country and then they complain about the hogs. Now, well, this isn't it. Mr. Bernard Shannon has lived out there since nineteen sixty six in that neighborhood. Mr. Butler moved there in two thousand and twenty. Now granted, there was some prior use with the zebras and alpacas, but those are quieter animals, right? Not sixty dogs barking.
And then corgis are dogs that really don't bark?
No, corgis bark.
Okay.
Yeah, that they're bred to herd and to that problem.
Okay.
And if you go to the website at your leisure on Facebook, there are several of the videos, specifically that one there that's dated April twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. I'm pretty sure the date is on that. Uh, it, it shows all the dogs run around, bark and whatnot. So again, Mr. Shannon's complaint is that he's lost his use and enjoyment of the property because of the dogs. And he also prepared a letter. He asked that I read it to you. You cannot allow this person to be able to have so many dogs as he wants to add to this and how he plans to get more. He has never asked for this change until I threaten to file a lawsuit. Because of his dogs barking constantly, I cannot go out and work my gardens like I thought I would be able to when I retired. Pulling weeds is a daily job and when I have to listen to the dogs bark all the time, it drives me nuts and out of the garden. Also, sleeping outside under the stars is out of the question because they bark all night long and deer that move through. I used to sleep at night with my windows open to get fresh air into the house and love to hear the crickets and the owls that live around here. But not anymore. My retirement has turned into one big nightmare. He will not and cannot stop the dogs from barking. This was a problem at his previous residence in Jessup, Iowa. That is why he moved. I request the buildings that he built be soundproof and like the quarry up the road, sound barrier built between he and I. And that's the end of his letter.
Okay.
So Mr. Butler is applying for a home industry permit known as, for a known nuisance that Mr. Shannon described. We recommend that I in the application and we ask for really. Now, the stated intent of the agricultural dis- district is intended to design and serve the agricultural community and protect agricultural land from approachment of urban land uses. Further in accordance with Iowa code, it's amended that this intent to preserve the availability of agricultural land and encourage efficient urban development patterns. This district is not intended to be used for non-farm residential subdivision unless and it exists at the time of adoption of this ordinance. In the A one agricultural district, the following provisions, regulations and restrictions shall apply. A principal permitted use authorizes private kennels, but not commercial kennels. We argue that this is falling under a commercial kennel due to the number of dogs. Mr. Beatty argues that he's grandfathered in, but that's not the case. If I was to buy a property here in Buchanan County in nineteen twenty four, I'd be really old, but yet I wouldn't be able to relate all the way back to, to go off of those zoning ordinances. This ordinance, the zoning orders was passed in two thousand and twenty in order, in order to get back, is there a problem with that or?
No.
Okay, all right. I want to make sure I wasn't wrong. So if, uh, in order to get grandfathered in, he would have had to have that the kennel in operation at that point in time and bringing it forward. But as the, uh, Mr. Beatty stated, it wasn't. Uh, he didn't have the home use industry permit then. He doesn't have one now. Uh, there's also been significant breaks in time prior, time breaks from the prior owners with the zebras, with the alpacas. A prior owner had a kennel in there as well, but those services stopped and then Mr. Beatty or Butler moved in. Also, Mr. Butler is not the true owner of the property. He's a contract vendor. So he's in the process of buying it, but it's not his. In section nine C, you'll find the following on special exemptions in accordance with section twenty three F, this ordinance, none of the following uses shall be established, reconstructed, structurally altered, enlarged or moved unless the board of adjusters approves the issuance and a special exemption permit. Animal shelters, including wildlife shelters. As an animal shelter, the board of justice must approve the issuance of a special exemption permit. And we would request when the board of adjustment was going to listen to the.
This isn't a shelter. This is a sanctuary. So that would be different.
Okay. Is that explained in the ordinance?
In the old ordinance, it's simple, straightforward. Um, the only interpretation in that ordinance prior to two thousand and twenty, September fourteenth, it says stables and kennels. This is the document that I shared with you. So and, and the, or his statement, if you're in compliance and we happen to, as a county, change of ordinance, all right, currently, if somebody was going to establish a kennel in two thousand and twenty, September fourteenth, actually, the way it reads now, you'd have to rezone to the manufacturing district like we did to the east. How many people think that, uh, you know, a kennel or a veterinary clinic is in manufacturing district? Also, I cannot go and research every single property that's been owned and established prior to multiple zoning ordinance throughout the decades. He was established prior to our change. We, once, once an ordinance change, you can't research every single property, but ask them to rezone that property. Number one, it's a financial occurrence to the property owner. And, and it's an expense to our office and it would be a, it would be a twenty four, seven type of occurrence. So he was in compliance, interpretation as stables and kennels, like I highlighted for you on number five of page one fifty two on our old ordinance. Yes, if, if, if there was, if it was not established on June sixth, two thousand and twenty, I would have a different interpretation. Thus, all those emails that I give you copies of researching, researching the recorder's office when it was established, when the Corgi Sanctuary Alliance Energy, uh, uh, utilities bill started underneath that name. So, and I had been upfront with Mr. Butler from the beginning. It all depends on that Sept- September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty date. If you were established before that, then we have to go to a different um, process and we would have been going in front of the planning zoning commission and then to you.
But it was established before that because the bills and stuff were in the Corgi win.
Correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Shannon would disagree with that. He does not, he does not believe that it was operating as a sanctuary, shelter, kennel at that point in time.
Well, and I, I.
That, that, that can be something we bring up later as well.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Oh, however, I've known Mr. Butler for years because he used to reside in Jessup where I reside. I know that he had a lot of dogs at that point in time, the little corgis. Um, I've watched him handle them. I've watched their manner, mannerisms. I have never, ever, ever heard a complaint from anybody in that neighborhood about those dogs barking. I've walked by his property several times. Never did they bark at me. So I don't know, maybe something's changed, but at that point in time, there was no complaints.
And so, and we would argue that something, we would agree with you that something probably has happened. But then we do have a nuisance complaint now. And that is the reason why when it comes to the home industry standards, the following criteria shall be met. This is in accordance with the zoning ordinance. It's clearly incidental, secondary to the residential occupancy of a dwelling unit located at the property. It's conducted entirely confined within accessory buildings located upon the property. With so many dogs, the kennel, additional structure will become the primary focus of the kennel. There shall be no evidence of such industry being conducted within the accessory buildings, which is perceived at or beyond the lot line by virtue of outside storage, displays, noise, odor, smoke, blah, blah, blah. So we want to focus on the noise aspect. As the picture shows, the activity is clearly happening outside the structures when the dogs are running and barking. Mr. Butler stated on a prior occurrence that he's had as many as sixty four dogs at one time at the property. And then the dogs will be seen and heard outside of the lot lines through noise and odor. Uh, customer parking or the inspector's parking uh, will, shall be provided as inconspicuous as possible on the premises. Again, as a picture related, the driveway is very short. It's out in the open. So every time he has a visitor or inspector, the neighbor, Mr. Shannon will see it. Customers' events are going to be present at all time. Also, in the ordinance, shall obtain and possess a valid home industry permit. Mr. Butler doesn't possess a valid home industry permit which should be issued by the board of supervisors. Again, we talked about the board of supervisors consideration in the renewal process. Mr. Shannon asked the board to deny the home industry application to the violation of the zoning ordinance. The nuisance it creates, the impact that it's had on his quiet use and enjoyment of Mr. Shannon's property and future litigation. That's all I have. Um, do you have anything to add?
Um, I'm Bernard Shannon. I'm the owner to the north. I have a garden right along the road there. And I go out there and I'll sit all summer long working on this garden. And this is Dixie and she helps me out with it too. So she's heard the noise. Now this noise continues all day long. It's not constant. Yes, we get a break every now and then, ten minute, fifteen minute. It just starts right back up again. And sometimes I can get an hour break from the noise, but it is constant. And I have videos of the noise, which I started last year in the summertime when it started making me really mad. So if anybody wants to see those, they can see. I mean, it's not real loud because it's on home, but I know proof. Yeah, there's, act when you said you knew him in Jessup. When he first moved in there, I think ten dogs is what he had. But I don't know. I, I, I didn't see that many, but I know I didn't have that many. And that summer, last summer, he started up, he had all them dogs move in Scott Creek.
So just so everybody understands, so technically, if Mr. Butler had an attorney here, he wouldn't even have to be here because we actually are going above and beyond. Pre-September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, interpretation with stables and kennels in that ordinance, he's in compliance. So I felt that this is the first time I'd ever had a complaint here. Again, I don't drive every road every day, every week. But was upset way with the rock quarry dozen times plus or minus. Never have heard a complaint, never had a nuisance call until then. So I felt it was a good idea to get this business on record. But technically, we, we do not have to require him to even apply for the home industry. What this does is it gets it on our, on our files. And then if there's everything, anything in the future. Now again, these same complaints and same concerns can be voiced to the board of health on Thursday morning at seven, which I'm going to report on it as well. But again, whether it's the corn cow plant on the west side of the, um, independence, dust, noise, pests, et cetera, trees, fences, dust control, again, with noise, trees, fence, building. So my interpretation would be. So, my interpretation would be, there's gonna be a building that's insulated and gonna help the, uh, buffer of the potential noise. I, I think that would be wise, or that, that's really the only remedy that I can come up with, you know, other, but we cannot tell him since he, he owned the property June sixth, two thousand and twenty. And I do have a, a letter from Alliance Energy, it says, hi Brett, and I shared with us, with you guys as well, I was unable to retrieve a copy of your first bill in our archive, but hopefully this email will suffice verifying your account was set up with the Corgi Win Rehabilitation Sanctuary on six-six, two thousand and twenty. Your first bill was sent out on seven-sixteen, two thousand and twenty, with the due date of eight-five, two thousand and twenty.
I did, looking through all the correspondence here, I see the, uh, order deed from our Recorder's Office, and that was dated on, uh, June tenth, two thousand and twenty.
Sounds like you got it.
Authorizing the transaction that was on June ninth.
Chairman, I think the lady back there had something to say.
Someone, and I don't know who it was, it was long time ago, told me that he was asked to leave Jessup because of the dog.
I mean.
And I don't know who it was at this point.
I would have been on city council at that point in time, and we did not ask Mr. Butler to leave.
Is there? I'm the type of person, I like to seek compromise. I don't know when something like this, I think, first of all, Board of Health, something like this, if it's a nuisance issue, that goes through for the public health.
And I explained that, uh, to Joe in an email on Thursday, a little bit. Like I said at the beginning of my presentation, this is sort of two and threefold in a way.
What I, what I wanna bring up in the compromise is some kind of, if there's a possibility that conditions could be set, like, how far back is the fence from the roadway, or is that right up on the back slope of the ditch or something, or is there room, is there room to plant trees in there?
Yes, and that's down the road. We're a five oh one nonprofit, so we have a board of directors. And I have to, I can wanna do things right now, but as you all know, with any kind of board, you've gotta ask. I wanted to put this building up two years ago. It's taken this long to raise the money, find everything, get it together, get everybody to agree, you know, five people. And, so, my initial is to consistently get this building up, try to help block the noise, and they can't see him when he's across the road or hear him as easily, which is what the problem was. Yes, the fence is close to the river. I knew it was a problem, I've gone over and talked to Mr. Shannon, uh, a couple of times, no one was bothering him, trying to come up with a solution, trying to explain, I'm trying to figure it out, so it's not so bothersome to him, he's an amazing gardener. I've told everybody and I've met, this guy is crazy gardener. Not crazy, but good. And I've gone over and I've talked to Dixie several times, cause he'd get mad last year and walk away. And, uh, I mean, Dixie, you know what you told me about the situation? I'm not gonna repeat it, okay? But I was told more or less, things are going on with him and, and he's upset, and to just ignore it. It's, well, I don't want him upset, did I not tell you that I don't want you guys upset? And I'm trying to find a solution, I tell you that. And so, anyway, no, before he filed his lawsuit, I was already starting and already called him. Okay, and I went across the street, I saw him in the spring, up there in April, and I went across the street to talk to him, to tell him, hey Bernie, you know, I think I found a solution to the problem, and he basically was like he was in the driveway with us uh, last week, just very negative, nasty, and just told me, get rid of the duck, that's all he said, get rid of the duck.
So, his only, he's only gonna be happy if you get rid of the duck.
Was bad or Muslim or, uh.
It's a noise, or noise.
He's mad about the noise. So, my attorney, our, our attorney is in Washington DC, so she just said, look, she sent me a deal to measure DB, there's rules on DB, you know, the decibels of noise. So, I've been having to go around, do videos and stuff. Point is, I don't want him upset, I like him and I like Dixie, and I'm amazed at what they do across the street, I don't wanna be a problem. However, we're also a service for abused animals, we're sanctuary for them. I've been doing this for twenty years, I've never had a complaint, I've always had people around. When I moved onto the property, there were forty-six corgis. We did the property so we could help more dogs. And when I bought the property, the owner was a breeder. And he also had all those different exotic animals out there. So, the house directly across the street, when that burned down, I'm not sure how many years ago that is today, when that burned down, that was full of dogs. Yellow labs, and when that burned down, it killed all those dogs. But the reason we bought the property, I'm just saying, there was a kennel situation there breeding, was because the whole back of the you say, uh-uh, but it's provable, because I have the reports from the fire department, the electric company, I've gone and disconnected the power, and also the gas company. He did two breed, he told me, he told me, Brett.
We, we need to have you folks address the board and.
I'm sorry, sorry.
We wanna maintain this.
Well, I'm trying to. I can hear and it's like, oh wait.
So, yeah, keep your comments to the board, because they're the ones that are making the decision here. So. So, actually, this building. Conditions, you know, I used to raise MUs, and not that they, they don't make noise or nothing like that, but I had a woven, I had like, what I call a horse wire, the two-by-four wire up for pendant round there and stuff. But for the winter and stuff, I put up like a woven cloth, and I got it through that company over to Dyer'sville and stuff, and I just attached it. Is there a way, and that was pretty much inexpensive material and stuff, and I just put it up on the fence and it, it, it was black colored, so you can't see through it and stuff. Uh, I wonder if something like that would help, cause to plant trees is expensive, and it takes trees time to grow and stuff. I just wonder if that'd be a quick answer for a condition.
That won't stop the noise, and he's not upset about seeing the dogs, he's upset about them barking.
But are they barking because they're seeing them?
They're here.
Here.
Okay, so.
I mean, let's be honest, last year he was mad, so he was backing his car up and he turned his stereo all the way up and crank it up, and play it in the mornings, and that would upset the dogs. Hell, I've got cameras and recording outside had, since we got there, so I can monitor the dogs twenty-four hours a day. You can hear it at times, when he's frustrated, yells at them, shut up, well, when you do that across, where they can't actually see you because of the tree line there, that gets them excited, and then they'll stay worked up. I talked to him about that, I said, you know, it's not helping you, they're gonna keep barking, let's let that go, you know, and I hadn't heard him do it again, but he was backing the car up and then trying to get the music up, and that was his frustration. I went and talked to Dixie about it, and I said, you know, I understand why he's doing it, and it's okay, it's gonna keep the dogs wa- wound up, but we like the music he plays. I could hear it all the way at the back of my property, and I got six acres back there. And you can go back there in the woods and you can hear his music, it's like, so what? You know, I don't live in a pristine environment, I understand that, and I understand he's upset. But it keeps the dogs worked up. Since I've changed it, and I went over and I told him, and again, that was prior to him hiring Mr. Gray, and then a couple days later, I get the letter from Mr. Gray with the demands. And once he started demanding instead of talking, and then it was like, okay, we're done. So, I had already changed the fence line all the way down to the edge of his property, on the east end, and got them so they can't go anywhere near the gate or that end of the field. Cause I have three acres fenced off for the dogs, just for the dog. Uh, and it's double fence, it's coyote fence, ten-foot coyote fence, and then chain link fence. So, I do understand his frustration. It just, I think that it's bothered him so bad that, that's what he focuses on, and, and he's not an animal person. I get that, not everybody is. And, yes, at night, the deer come up, this weekend, I'm dealing with another issue, we have cats, and people who drop their animals off, uh, in our neck of the woods. Now, I've got two little kittens that I'm trying to catch, because they're upsetting the dogs at night, they're coming out and I can't catch them. So, in the middle of the night, sometimes I've had two or three dogs get out, they'll go out and bark cats. And deer come up to the back of the property, and they have learned, they're not, don't care about the dogs, and they come up and tease the dog. I can go out there with a flashlight, try to scare them off, do whatever, it doesn't work.
And so, once you build this building, then the dogs are gonna be in the building at night?
No, not necessarily, the, all the time, cause they gotta go out, go to the bathroom.
Well, yeah, I understand that too.
But I've also been taking recordings at night and doing the DB meter and recording all that crap. And they're not above the, uh, acceptable noise limits set by, quote. So, we're not above any of those limits at that point. So, it's hard for me, how do you stop a dog from barking, how do you stop the deer from grassing, how do you stop the the people from dropping any animals off? I can't stop all, cause it's, it's not possible.
Right.
But in all fairness, I understand his frustration. We also have people that do come stay out there, uh, they're no bother, they're not loud, they're not anything, we have a, they set up a trailer, and they stay in the trailer, and they can't hear the dogs at night. Um, my, nine times out of ten, with everything we're recording, and I've been doing it now for the last three or four weeks, is they're bed by eight o'clock at night, they play all day. They get up, I used to get up at five, five-thirty, and get them out and all that, and then it, with this problem now, I said, okay, and I tried to keep everybody in and not let them out to go to the bathroom, do all that until after six-thirty.
Right.
You know, I'm trying to be fair, I don't know what else I can do. The dogs have nowhere to go, their only other option is euthanasia, because they're last chance. And I have the ill dogs, I have the ones with DM, I have the ones with cancer, I have, you know, and they're not all out at the same time, and they're not all barking at the same time. Again, though, I understand, when they bark, it can be irritating if you don't like dogs, like noise.
So, what's before the board is just to approve the home industry permit? And he is, Chad, he's like perfectly legitimate with what he's doing as far as our zoning.
This is going actually above and beyond, so technically, he was established pre-ordinance. We would not have to do this, but I think with, you know, me going on site, seeing what was there, and just felt like it needed to be in file in our office in case we did. And it's ironic timing, even our first call, um, you know, Amber and I discussed how ironic the timing was. You know, basically, there was calls in April to go out and make an appointment, then we took a call from, uh, Mr. Gray, is the first one in the office, so at least now, we know, we know it's there. And if we, um, discuss some of these compromises with the Board of Health, you know, I was gonna report the same thing on Thursday and get some of my recommendations and then move forward with the two-party.
I appreciate you guys contributing and, and explaining what your positions are, and, um, I understand, and I'm looking at it, I, I would still make a motion to approve the home industry permit for Corgi Win Rehabilitation. Sanctuary.
All right, but first, do I have a second?
Uh, I'm not willing to make a second this time.
I'll make a second.
Now, we can have further discussion after the second.
Yep.
Uh, I'm not favor moving ahead with the ordinance in my vote, until I first present it to the Board of Health and see what, if we can work out something on the conditions and see what the Board of Health has to say about this. And that's my stance on it, uh, and, and after some way we can work on some compromising here, because I truly understand that the issue about trying to enjoy your property and, and having constant noise. I understand that, and I get that, but I feel that maybe there's some things that we can do here, uh, to do a compromise, and maybe move the fence back, move the animals further back away from that area, and do certain things with, uh, blocking the view and everything, so. So, that's my stance.
May I have a roll call, please?
Sure can.
Yes.
We'll go yes.
Or no.
Thank you.
So, question carries.
I would think, do these people know on the Board of Health meeting, I mean, it's that they got the option to come to that and everything, or?
Obviously, they're hearing it today, but, um, I'll follow up with everybody. But it's seven o'clock, we meet the third Thursday of every month. We are at the new public health facility, which is west of town, most people know it as either the old Pennican Ford buildings or the Riddell building.
Approve a cemetery appreciation month proclamation. Have you got your reading voice on?
That was something that was sent in by Tony.
Thanks. Thanks, Chad.
Thank you, Chad.
From the state of Iowa, Governor's Office, uh, proclamation for Cemetery Appreciation Month. Whereas Iowans are aware of the need to reserve the rich heritage contained in Iowa's pioneer historical cemeteries, and whereas this appreciation of their ancestors resting places develops a sense of pride in their ancestors' accomplishments and in their communities.
Sure.
And whereas pride and respect for our pioneers leads to an interest in and concern for the future, it is with this thought in mind that we dedicate the month to, or this month to the care of our pioneer cemeteries. Now and therefore, I, Kim Reynolds, Governor of the State of Iowa, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-four as Cemetery Appreciation Month.
I make a motion to approve Cemetery Appreciate Month Proclamation and to support it.
A second?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job reading.
Thank you.
All right, items for discussion, place on file the following manure management plans. Mods Place, Westford Township, section twenty-five, Premier Pork LLC, number two. Fremont Township, section twenty-four, Premier Park LLC, number three. Fremont Township, section thirteen.
So, moved, placed on file.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor? IT compensation time carryover, Jason.
Hello?
Hello.
More comfortable. Okay, so, IT compensation time carryover. Long story short, I suggest as long as accumulated forty-two point seven-five hours of comp time, which would reset at the end of the fiscal year. I'd like to carry that over. Uh, he was unable to take any time off while I was away, forgot a month and a half, with my child. So, he would like to take that time between September twentieth and October eleventh. But that would be into the next fiscal year.
And he has plans.
Yes.
Until October eleventh, you said?
Correct. Yeah, from September twentieth to October eleventh.
Will he at that time, after fiscal year, beginning of July one, will he have a, any additional time accumulated for time off?
His plan and our plan is to add more time off after this fiscal, to just be more in sync with everything else. Uh, because it's three weeks, since he's a newer hire, he has the five floating holidays, which would cover thirty-seven point five hours. With his forty-two point seven-five hours he currently has, he would need to make up thirty-nine point seven-five hours for the plans to happen. So, we would want to earn that in the next fiscal year.
Okay, and?
Won't foresee's for the wedding, right?
Correct. Yeah.
See, this is a little bit different request that we we've authorized during different times since I've been on the board here. But there's always been stipulations that they had to have it used up within like say thirty or sixty days after the five one. So we're going well beyond that, more than what I know that we have ever did.
Mm hmm.
And, uh, this is for personal reasons, which makes it a little tough.
For personal reasons for him to get married overseas.
Planning of it.
Mm hmm.
Has anyone, has anyone spoke with Karen on her advice on this? Because I know she's dealt with it numerous times.
I did. I gave it to Karen's attention, she said it right.
Yeah, I was asking if the board, if the board members.
Emails back and forth.
Yeah, and I did talk to Karen.
Okay, that's what I was asking, and you know.
But I I wanna, I'm always afraid about opening up cans of worms. So if we have somebody from the Sheriff's Department, from somebody of secondary roads or any other department that says they're getting married overseas, how are we gonna deal with that? We making special?
To clarify, he's not getting married, he's planning it with his girlfriend. So he plans, hopefully within a year or two to get married. This is the initial plan. The initial thought was for her to come here and it was denied by the U S government. So now he has to go over there.
And he's planning on being back October eleventh, you said?
Correct, that's his return date.
I'd make a motion that we extend his compensation time through October fifteenth to have it used up. And that way we've got a definitive timeline on it.
Yeah, I spoke with him at length this morning just to absolutely lock it in. And he coordinated with his girlfriend overseas and this is the time period.
Well, the thing about is, is I look at it as a soft benefit also. It's by him taking time off, we're not giving pay out money on it. You know, if you just.
Correct, we're not cashing it out.
Yeah, we're not cashing out, we're preventing having in time. What was, what was Karen's opinion on that? Did she say that?
She brought to my attention that with the auditors at the pay rate he's currently at, it's not equal to the pay rate he'd be compensated for next fiscal. So the auditors, not necessarily your office, but state auditors would potentially have problems with that because difference in pay rate. So hypothetically, let's say he was paid five bucks an hour now and he got a raise in the next fiscal to bring him to ten bucks an hour. The time isn't equal.
So does he go back to that old pay rate then for that comp time?
No.
Okay.
And I think that reasoning that Jason just gave, excuse me, is the main reason why the cutoff date for comp time to be used is June thirtieth due to the pay increases coming up July first.
Hmm. I talked to Karen about this, she was also had mentioned that maybe, um, some people from secondary roads who farm and get some comp time, like maybe they might want to extend theirs at some point in time. And instead of being, getting the payout, which.
Yeah, that would be union, though, that would have to be in the contract.
Right.
Well, uh, means it's not gonna cost payout cashed out a, uh, in second.
Okay.
Uh, the motion.
Have a first and a second? All in favor, signify by I?
Aye.
I, motion carries.
And one quick other thing, uh, the metal storage thing in my office, can I rip that out?
That revolving one?
Yeah, that no one will fix, no one wants to take care of it and it's just.
Thirty years.
Yeah. It'll get ripped out.
Yeah, I would just make sure you use all precautions. Uh, if you're doing any cutting, sawing with anything, the word safety, eye protection, uh, whatever.
Yep.
I don't want injuries happen because of this or, and if you need like something's coming down heavy or something like that, get some assistance to help get it down off the ceiling or whatever it needs. And then you plan on, you've got disposal.
Yeah, I've spoken with wildland maintenance and you mentioned that the metal recyclers, South Town probably just take the metal and probably won't get much out of it, if anything, but they'd probably take it. Anything else, throw it in my truck and take it down there and be done with it.
For turn years or whatever.
Yeah. Good?
Yep, you're good.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, Brooks.
Sup, is courthouse lawn treatment?
I guess I'll explain this because I had a, uh, general conversation with the two custodians different times about that. I think we've all been concerned about the beautification of our lawn and our grounds and stuff around here and stuff. But like everybody, you know, every spring you have a, you know, carry away of weeds, dandelions and stuff like that. So, uh, Ben came to me about a little over a week ago and he said, uh, have you thought anymore about that? And I says, oh, not really, I just kind of put it back on my mind, haven't did any more thought about it. He says, well, would you care if I reach out and ask, uh, a lawn professional about what it would cost to do weed control and dandelion control on our lawn? And I says, I have no problem to have him send me the estimate quote on that. And then I will share that with the rest of the board, uh, to get an idea what if we moved ahead with this ever, what we're looking at for costs. So that's the reason we have it hand now, which is, uh, something I wanted to everybody to review and get their thoughts on it. If something else maybe we want to do in the future. Uh, it's like, uh, different steps, uh, uh, the late spring, summer and early fall. By doing all of them steps of treatment, uh, it's mouse three hundred and forty three dollars and eighty three cents. I just wanted to get this presented to for discussion and see what the other two board members thought about that.
I think it's a good idea. I wish we had thought about it when we were doing our budget process and put some money in there.
Yeah, we don't have it, the money's not budgeted and dentiflins are actually beneficial for your lungs.
Here we go again.
It's, yeah, and I'd have different people say they're a wildflower.
Be allowable to take, uh, personal donations to, uh, cover the cost of that or is that something we shouldn't be doing?
It'd be something you shouldn't be doing.
Okay.
Get that answered.
I knew I would.
Yeah.
Feel a stare in the back of my head.
Maybe when we do the next budget during the next budget cycle, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree, I personally think our lawn needs a lot of grooming, but the, the problem is we don't have, it's not budgeted right now.
Right.
I don't know if there's enough out there to make wine or not.
I don't know, I could probably find a recipe.
So I just kind of a topic of discussion. So now we kind of know if we move forward with this, kind of looking, we know what it's gonna cost for dollars to budget it and stuff like that.
All right.
That's it.
Where has Ruth?
I put that on that on there just for Clayton's emails, so all three of you can find out what's going on, including myself. I guess I should say all four of us.
Well, as you know, we, uh, let's have an agreement with, uh, Martin Gardner, Bethany Jordan. Uh, the architect was here and did an assessment of, uh, the condition, we have got the report on this, but she, this kind of, I wish I'd have known this sooner. But I think it's one of them deals where Bethany thought Lyle was gonna tell me about it, tell us about it. And Lyle thought she was there, so it never happened. So it's about two weeks after the fact, after she was here, that I finally found out about it and what's happened up there. And she's thinking it's very well, very highly likely that this separation of the membrane and we got insulation sheets up there, uh, foam and then there's separation that's happened up there. And she figures because of the wind damage that's did this. Uh, so because of that, she thinks it may qualify for church coverage and stuff. It's kind of in a nutshell, so, uh, we do our business, we've been doing our business for many years with Service Roofing out of Warren Lou. Uh, there's a representative, uh, technician from Service Roofing that's coming here this afternoon to go up there and look at it and find out maybe after that if what he thinks has caused this damage and if it is wind and stuff like that. So then at that time, we could maybe issue a claim on it and get some cost figures on, uh, doing the repair and up there. So until after he's here and does the inspection of it, uh, being expert, that's not all after information.
Yeah, I thought Lyle got hold when he was gonna come at eight o'clock this morning.
No, I was told like two o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, all right.
And that's a misunderstanding. That time got changed. But that just kind of whether I imagine they're maybe get, or hit, hit this and they can get on roofs and do repair.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping after, we'll have more information after that inspection is done by the contractor.
And here to public comments, everybody keep it to three minutes, state your name and, uh, be nice.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, Next Era Energy. Um, just ahead of Wednesday's meeting, I was, uh, wanting just to refresh a, uh, memo that we provided for the commission. Uh, that kind of outlined some of the concerns we had with the ordinance that was forward. As you recall, the ordinance, uh, did, did get approved and I don't think any of our, uh, concerns or our questions were really, you know, addressed there. They, the ordinance went forward without any accommodations to what we were asking. So I just asked that, you know, ahead of the meeting that you get a chance to look at this, so I can submit that for the record. Um, and then, you know, of the concerns that we outlined, I think that the three largest and most impactful were on the requirements that the property be rezoned to manufacturing. Uh, honestly, across the state, I don't, I don't know where that provision has ever been requirement within the code. I've seen rezonings for an overlay, but I think you set yourself up for a number of legal issues that relates to proceed with rezoning to a manufacturing district.
Actually, our attorney looked at that, so.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I'm, I'm not seeing anything that's similar to that. Uh, also, but that max are, are almost double what we're seeing as a standard practice. Um, not to say that there aren't larger ones out there, four and a half times is, it's quite, quite likely. Um, we're, you know, we were, it's not like we're, we're not suggesting that there be setbacks, we, we do. Um, you know, we're just feel like more like two times would be more reasonable. Uh, and then the, the other big one is the CSR. Uh, the fifty five CSR is gonna be very difficult to find or build a project where it is. Those three conditions alone within the ordinance just make it a very challenging, uh, environment for us to build. We just feel like there's a lot of things on the table, um, that the county would reduce out of particularly revenue, um, stream. And, uh, we hate to see an ordinance like this move forward and just, you know, create more problems in development of the project. Um, you know, one thing, uh, we've seen other counties do is engage with their local cog or their council governments to have their, you know, ordinance looked at. I know that was a consideration at the beginning of, of this process. Uh, you know, that, that to me is a really good way to, you have, have your ordinance kind of looked at and double checks. Just, just a, a thought. Uh, and, uh, outside of that, I just wanted to thank the board for their, their time and consideration and just, uh, you know, we'll see how Wednesday goes and ask that you consider some of the tweaks that we had requested as part of, uh, the planning commissioner review process.
All right.
It's good.
Thank you.
I get you a copy of this, Chris. Oh, okay. F A N Jimmer. Next up?
Kathy Cole, Zoning. The CSR in Buchanan County, I was a realtor for twenty six years and as long as I've ever been a realtor, it's been fifty five. I guess that's all I want to say. And as far as I know, it was fifty five before that.
Right.
We've always had it. That was a part of our. So we, are we gonna change something or a company so that they can build trinkets? Is that why we're changing it just for them? That's just something to consider.
Thank you, Kathy. Next.
Randy, I brought a question last week about that, uh, the money next year. When did, when did that money? When did the Economic Development Committee receive those dollars? You know, the silver level between two thousand and five thousand dollars?
I don't.
Next year, we have a date on that?
I don't, I'm not sure, I don't have a date on that.
A concern I would have would be that, is that made before the vote? Did it affect the vote? There's still some questions there. Is that the county attorney to find that out or who's, who needs to find that out?
That payment was when that contribution donation was made.
Yeah.
That's what you'd like to know that data. I could find that date out, I guess. Basically, I dropped the ball, maybe I should have found out, but we haven't had a meeting since last week, so.
Well, it would be interesting because, you know, did it affect the last vote in lack of?
And I'm in contact.
I'm thinking it happened, I, I'm pretty sure it happened after that. I'm, I'm pretty positive.
Um, I'm in contact with Josh and regarding that one question about the director being an agent. So he has some thoughts and so let's get, get with him today. I'll let you know when I bring up more.
When last year, I, next year I was working with the Fair Board too. They were trying to make a contribution to Fair Board, somehow that got all messed up, but, uh, I don't think there's problem with them making a contribution to things themselves, but I believe evil's worried about it, I guess.
Next, Wendy?
Looking spearheading, um, helping zoning. Life won't get in county, doesn't it? Um, I guess I'm gonna deal, I'm gonna refer to the setbacks. When we went through, we've used policies from Iowa and we, uh, by selection, Kathy Carries are back back now with her. Um, when we went through and we do the setbacks and we talked about setbacks, discussed setbacks, we were blue in the face a couple of nights and I think you could read our minutes and, and see that we were very diligent in conversations. Um, we, uh, we didn't bring anything to the table that wasn't in print already in other counties. Um, they're not the strongest setbacks. Free zoning, um, to manufacturing, that is per our code that we have been following. Um, that was updated in twenty twenty with the help of InterPod. Um, the, uh, updates to the, um, plan of the zoning that we're doing, the ordinances right now. Um, we've been allowed to do them within Buchanan County, not willing to save, save money. But these were done with InterPod in twenty twenty. We are basically updating to become current with today's rule. So I guess, um, from a zoning standpoint, we appreciate all the hours that each of us has put into it and the, all the hours that the boards of supervisors have taken. that each of us has put into it and the, all the hours that the boards of supervisors have taken to listen to us. Um it's been a long process. And uh we put force best we can for the entire Bucana County. The citizens, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thanks.
Who else?
I think nothing else. I'm making motion for her.
A second?
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
In a jerk.
Thanks, everybody.